Good evening. I now call to order the January 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Pecoson Planning Commission. If you are able, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. We gather today with a shared commitment to serve our community with fairness, respect, and wisdom. May our discussions be guided by understanding and are focused on the greater good. Let us work together to make decisions that uplift and benefit all those we represent. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your political which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us here tonight as well as those joining us from home. We're going to start off with our approval of the minutes. And I understand, Mr. Hirsch, you had an amendment that you would like to make.
Yes, I noticed as I was watching the recording that it appeared that the first name in the public hearing portion of the minutes was transposed. So I think I heard the gentleman state his name as Moody Harp and it was recorded as Harp Moody.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes with that amendment.
A second.
Roll call, please.
President.
Oh, I approve.
There you go.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, Commissioner.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Guy Singer.
Aye.
And Chairman Shaw.
Aye. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the vote carries six to six.
Now we move into our audience for visitors. This is a time for the audience to speak on an item that is not listed on your agenda. So it's not related to our public hearing. It's not related to new business. It's something other than that item. Does anybody here tonight wish to speak on anything other than that? Seeing done, then I will close the audience for visitors this evening. And we're going to jump into our first item, which is item number E. And it is a request for a conditional use permit by Joe Raffles, Iowa LLC for the operation of a multi-use facility to include an indoor gun range, gunsmithing, and firearm manufacturing, retail, and offices, classrooms identified at 300 City Hall Avenue map, tax map parcel 27-01-00-0092, Zoned Village Commercial. Thomas, please make your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board would be remiss if I didn't mention, for those present and those members of the public watching at home, that we did discuss the public hearing items tonight in six o'clock work session, all but one. So it will be for view and available on YouTube in just a few days. The first public hearing is an application just read by you, Madam Chair. It's for a multi-use facility to include an indoor gun range, gunsmithing, and firearm manufacturing, retail, and office and classroom space to be operated at Zero West Creek Road, tax map parcel 27, Tac 01, Tac 00, Tac 0092, Zoned Village Commercial. The property is zoned just that, VC, and those uses requested are not permitted by right. The notice for this public hearing was advertised for in the Daily Press, January 9th to January 16th, and adjacent property owners were notified. Planning Commission has seen this application before. It's changed a bit, so it was re-advertised for. This is technically the first public hearing of the revised application, but a lot has stayed the same, especially this slide has been unchanged per the business description in the application. The application submitted by the property owner, who's also at this point the applicant, these are the requests and the description of the business. I won't read through those one by one, but this is his intention for the parcel under consideration. This is the proposed site, addressed as Zero City Hall Avenue, but right next door to City Hall, this commonly referred to as the Straight Shot Brewing Parcel. It was, there was a CUP approved for it about a decade ago for a brewery. The owner of that, which is since sold to Mr. Raffles, and tonight you have the new, a new CUP before you for consideration and recommendation. This is a conceptual site layout provided by the applicant. I'm going to refer to the middle part of it as a cornerstone, the cornerstone of the building, and then the wing to the north, just as that, the north wing. Those two parts of the building are Phase One of this project. That's what you're considering tonight. I've overlaid a red X on the wing to the south because it's not part of Phase One of the development. That wing would hold space for future commercial and retail use, but is not included as part of this application or Phase One of the intended development. This is another concept design provided by the applicant. More concept design provided by the applicant. This is Phase One construction. You can see some of the intended uses for the space there, but I do have a clearer floor plan professionally prepared and submitted by the applicant for you to view. This is Level One of the Phase One floor plan. This is Level One, has that cornerstone part of the building and a flat range. Flat range meaning, you know, it's an open range. It's more of a training range than it is partitioned and bade, I'll say. Level One also includes a quiet range, VIP lounge, a smaller range, which I believe was intended for VIPs, and it includes a lobby area, some classroom space, and associated restroom facilities and storage. What you see running diagonally on the floor plan is a 100-yard rifle shooting bay. As it's been explained by the applicant, and obviously he'll have a chance to expand upon this, but this is a 100-yard shooting lane, I'll say, for rifles. However, the lane itself is not a full-size lane as you would normally associate with the size of a shooting bay. It's more or less a piped structure that you would shoot a rifle down, and then, of course, there would be a target in it. But it is not a full-size lane like you would normally associate with what I'll say is a conventional pistol shooting range. Level Two of the Phase One floor plan has that typical shooting area, 25-yard ranges, two bays. Important to note around those ranges is storage area. Serves the purpose just for that, for storage. Also serves another purpose, noise abatement, and that is especially important to this consideration. There is a retail floor area on the second level, restrooms, a prep room for the range, check-in area, retail storage and retail counter, some classroom space and gunsmithing space, and of course, a loading zone and storage area. The third level is a small portion of that cornerstone, I would say overlooking the retail floor, but surrounding it, there's office space, conference rooms, more office space, restrooms, and custodial closets. This is another concept design submitted by the applicant. I included this. It's important to an access conversation to the parcel. You see there in red, private easement described as Willanna Road. You've seen this slide before, and how it's presented to you tonight includes a condition that would require one or both 20-foot easements on either the north or south of the property. This would be an access easement granted to the city for purposes of emergency travel or pedestrian access. Basically, the accesses that 20 feet would permit. What you see there in red is an existing 50-foot private easement that runs on the east side of the property. It serves the properties to its south. The condition as presented previously would require the applicant to dedicate that 50 foot that currently exists as a private easement as right-of-way to the city. What I've tried to depict there in green is the approximate location of Willanna Road, which is what I showed you on this previous slide, a private easement from Alpha Street that traverses two other pieces of private property to serve the parcel subject of tonight's What this slide depicts is a conceptual future connection to Alpha Street. It's been a concept for decades in the city to connect eventually City Hall Avenue to Alpha Street, which is nearly impossible without consideration of this property. And that's a very conceptual, I'll say again, road connection that would run through this property and, one would hope, all the way to Alpha Street eventually. We have met with the applicant regarding that space. We had worked towards a condition that the applicant had offered to convey 40 feet of the northern portion of the property to the city, basically in exchange for the city constructing a two-lane road to serve this parcel, the adjacent parcels, and hopefully for future connection to Alpha's. Through subsequent conversations, the applicant asked that the condition be removed from the application. So what you have in front of you is the condition that existed previously that reflects the easement shown in yellow and, of course, the conveyance of right-of-way over the 50-foot private easement that exists currently. But this would have been a conceptual 40-foot conveyance to the city for the purpose of future connection to Alpha Street. This is an example of an eight-lane shooting bay provided by the applicant. What you see there in the back, I do believe, is rubber mulch that's used commonly for backstops and indoor shooting ranges. And what happens on occasion is it's serviced and the shot is taken out and then the mulch obviously put back in place to serve its purpose. Provided by the applicant, an example of a two-floor shooting bay, how it would appear from the lobby area. This is an example of a shooting lane staging area. So I think you have the gist of what the inside of this will look like if approved. This is presented to you as a multi-use facility. It's not just an indoor gun range. The applicant has another business, Hampton Roads Paramotors. Yes, that is the applicant in the picture on the right, flying over Back River on a paramotor, pretty cool. But he's requested that the office space and some retail area associated with that use also be permitted in the facility as part of this conditional use permit. This is taken straight from the city code. This is the intent, the intentions of the Village Commercial District. As you all know, that district basically encompasses the properties on City Hall Avenue, some properties that have some frontage on West Creek, the fountains of Pecoson properties, and a few others to our south. The first intention of the VC District is to encourage commercial and office uses that do not attract large volumes of traffic and continuous customer turnover. None of the uses, individual uses requested as part of the application are high-traffic generators. Overall impact is not necessarily calculable at this time. We will work with the owner and his development team during site development plan review to determine the necessary amount of parking spaces, and it will be on the applicant, the owner, to mitigate any traffic impact. The second intention of the VC District is to limit and discourage development of strip-type, highway-oriented, commercial uses that create traffic hazards. We don't necessarily believe this will do that. The third is to minimize the visual and functional conflict between residential and non-residential uses within and abutting the district. We've included a condition, we worked with the application, with the applicant on about architectural review. It will be subject, the building, the materials, the scale, the colors will be subject to ARB approval, and this will go to them at such time the applicant submits his site development plan. We've conditioned that it is designed consistent with the buildings that currently exist on City Hall Avenue. We will work with the applicant and provide material descriptions of city-owned buildings on City Hall Avenue to him and his design team. The fourth intention is to encourage the consolidation of curb cuts, driveways, parking areas for vehicle access, and to promote a more efficient and economical parking facility. That's something else we will ensure during our development plan review. The fifth is to promote development that minimizes land disturbance and incorporates compact, efficient design. I don't think it's an overstatement to say that the requested use, it's a large footprint, especially if built out and, you know, that second wing, that second phase ever constructed, absent of a formal site plan submission. I can't tell you a number, what the acreage of development is, or what the square footage is, or what percentage of the overall parcel it would be. The sixth intention is to create a pedestrian-friendly environment through the incorporation of sidewalks, bikeways, street trees, and street furniture. Again, something we'll do during development plan review. These are the permitted uses in the Village Commercial District. As a matter of right, the applicant would be able to entertain, I'll say, any of the uses in his facility if they were to purchase or lease space for him and the building, from him and the building. Conditional uses in the VC District. The code says, "The city council may approve a use as a conditional use upon consideration of, but not limited to, the following standards. All traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developers deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designated." That's conditioned. It's also a part of the city code. It's a clarifying condition, but that's there. "The proposed use will not conflict in architectural style, scale, or style to existing development in the district." Again, conditioned. That's that Architectural Review Board information I just covered. "Minimum visual and functional conflict will be created between the proposed use and nearby uses." Again, we don't anticipate it. We will make sure that doesn't happen in our development plan review by our DRC, our Development Review Committee. And the last line there, D, is that anticipated noise and congestion created by the use will be comparable to the levels created by other permitted uses in the district. Obviously, you know what exists in the district. It's a fairly tranquil and quiet district. Noise was a concern of the application the first time it was considered. The applicant and owner has since conducted some studies himself of local ranges. He will have an opportunity to present the findings of that to you all, and he also consulted the work of some sound and audio experts. He'll also be able to speak upon that. And at this time, with the condition presented to you, we don't anticipate noise being an issue. These are prohibited uses in the VC District. The applicant has not requested or could not request anything specifically prohibited. Comprehensive Plan, which serves as a guide to the Planning Commission and City Council, does reference the district and this area of the district in the infrastructure section. I've highlighted, I'll say, there at the bottom, what's relevant to this piece of property and to the application. "The extension of Alpha Street to City Hall Avenue should also be considered to improve connectivity and promote economic development within the VC zoning district. No formal studies of the sites have been proposed, but any infrastructure improvement master plan should consider them as potential sites for new access roads or emergency detours." This property was held under the same ownership for, I would say, about a part of a decade, maybe more. It was subject to a CUP. He, the applicant, then had offered a portion of the property that would allow for connection to Alpha Street in that consideration, the previous approval, the previous owner. Further comprehensive plan considerations, this is the land use section for the VC District. I won't read it line by line. There are some components of the district that should be included. You see there in bullets, some are pertinent to this consideration. Uniform streetscape with benches, streetlights, and landscaping. We've talked about that again. Will ensure during development plan review. Bikeways and sidewalks, of course, being part of that. And then roadway access from collector and sub-collector thoroughfares. That means public, basically, connection from arterial roads throughout our city. So City Hall Avenue, a new construction of a road to extend City Hall Avenue to Alpha's would be sufficient. These are the recommended conditions. There's 13 of them. I will go through them one by one. Some you see in all of your CUP considerations, but some are specific to this consideration. "The plan for the site shall only be approved once all requirements in city code are satisfied." That's a carryover condition. We see it every time we review a CUP. This is the noise condition that we've worked towards per your comments and with the applicant. Gunshot noise shall not exceed 55 decibels measured by city staff using a city-owned sound level reader. That's a sound level reader our police department has who responds to noise complaints. If we ever receive the complaint about the use, we would use the meter and take a reading. We say 55 decibels measured by the sound level reader at the western, southern, and eastern property line when the building is closed. We're not going to take a reading if a door is wide open. If the building is closed, the facility is closed, like it will be the vast majority of the time, that's when we would take a reading. And then we continue to say, "And measured from the northern property line as it existed at the time of application and prior to any conveyance of right-of-way." Supposing the applicant conveyed 40 feet to the city on the northern part of the parcel, we would take measurements from the property line as it currently exists. We wouldn't back up necessarily the reading to be closer to the building than we would require it at the time of application. The fourth condition is that all traffic impact shall be mitigated at the expense of the developer as deemed necessary by the manager or his or her designated. This conditional use permit allows for all uses specifically permitted as those found as permitted uses in the Village Commercial District. The uses per the application and permitted as part of the CUP are as follows. Retail sales as permitted in Section 10-2 of the city code permitted in conditional uses in the B2 District. This condition allows for the sale of outdoor sporting goods, products, firearms, and accessories, and the retail sales that basically you find in our B2 District on West Creek Road. This CUP also would permit gunsmithing and firearm manufacturing, the professional office space for Hampton Roads Paramotors, and classroom and or conference space to be used for firearm education, firearm safety courses, as well as aviation safety courses associated with Hampton Roads Paramotors. Seventh condition is that signage is to be permitted in accordance with Appendix D signs of the city code. All requirements as found in Chapter 22. Businesses, Article 3, gunnery ranges, shooting areas of the city code must be satisfied. That's an existing part of our code that is basically the regulating authority, is the police chief. If gunnery ranges or indoor shooting ranges were permitted by right, they would be subject to this requirement. This is no different. Coinciding with submission of a development plan, the applicant must submit architectural elevations of the proposed building as well as signage, material descriptions, paint colors, et cetera, to be considered by the city's Architectural Review Board. The ARB meets monthly. As soon as we receive the renderings from the applicant, we will start that process. We want it to coincide with submission of the development plan so that the mark is met on approval, and this way we don't draw out approval. That's how we tend to operate. As much as we can do at one time, we do it for folks that submit permit. "The facility shall be designed and constructed in a manner that is consistent with existing buildings on City Hall Avenue to include the offices located at 200 City Hall Avenue, the Pecoson Public Safety Building, and Pecoson City Hall." Mentioned it earlier. We will work with the owner on that and provide all the material descriptions he needs to make that happen. "The use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. If at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies or the conditions listed herein, the city council may revoke the permit." If a, this was also crafted in consultation with the applicant. If a site development plan for Phase One is not officially submitted to the city for review prior to July 1 of '26, this permit shall become null and void. That does not mean the applicant has until next July 1st to have an approved plan. It just means that he has to have a professionally-prepared and officially-submitted plan to us by next July 1st. If a certificate of occupancy for Phase One of the facility is not issued prior to December 31st of 2028, the permit shall become null and void. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. And 13 is that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, Madam Chair, members of
Thank you, Thomas.
I do want to mention, Madam Chair, the applicant did submit materials for you all. I've provided them in your agenda packet. I have them loaded for him to be able to present as well. So I will load those now. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we're going to begin by opening our public hearing tonight. Mr. Raffles, since you're the applicant, would you like to start? You can do your opening argument about the application, and then we'll allow you to close the last one. You can come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jose Raffles. I'm the applicant for Allender Outdoor Sports. And Madam Chairs, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight and seeing our application. Essentially, the reason why we decided to start with this development is because right now in the Hampton Roads area, they're building and building and building, and we're losing places to actually go out and enjoy the outdoor sporting that we used to do when we were younger. We used to be able to go in the woods, in the forest, go hunting, go target shooting. Not only that, but also teach our kids to do this, teach them firearm safety. And as you can see in Pecoson, there's more and more developments in town. So the areas that you could do that in the past are slowly shrinking. So we decided to come up with an idea where people can come in, not only bring their family and then teach them firearm safety, but also do it in a safe area where they have guidance from experts right there on the shop. Additionally, this location will have additional commercial space. So when they come in to the shooting range, they're not just coming here to go shoot. We might have restaurants, we may have a barber shop, who knows? We want this to be a destination, somewhere, a place to go in Pecoson where we can bring business from the outside into our town and keep that revenue here in town where we can actually enjoy it. Right now in the Hampton area, Hampton Roads area, there's one range comparable to this, which is Freedom Shooting down in Virginia Beach. which is Freedom Shooting down in Virginia Beach. The next comparable one will be Lafayette, but Lafayette is outdoors, and they are closed to membership only. The next closer one will be Green Top in Richmond. Right now, there are people from Newport News, Hampton, Pecoson, Yorktown that drive to Norfolk. They drive to Richmond to go to these ranges, because none of these ranges you're able to go and sight in your rifle before hunting season. So you have to actually drive an hour, two hours if the tunnel's locked up to actually go and do these things. As part of the approval process, we went out to these ranges, and we did a study, a sound study. We measured sound in different locations out in the parking lot, and we also measured sound out here in the city as a way to compare how loud would it be standing outside City Hall or standing outside the wall of our building. I will go through the sound study. If you have any questions for each slide, we can stop and address those questions, and then I will continue with the rest. The location studies were City Hall, Lafayette, Marksmen, Freedom Outdoors, and Green Top. The sound measurements were actually taken with this sound meter right here. Placed the sound meter on a stand outside of the locations, and it was logged for an hour, and we took an average, maximum, and a minimum readings, and that's how we did the study. Here gives you an example of different noise levels inside the decibel A scale, and it gives you an idea of how loud common objects are as far as decibel level. When you're looking at a gunshot, an unsurpressed rifle, you're looking at about 140 decibels. With a suppressor, you go down to 120. So they can be pretty loud. To give you an idea, a Nomadic air ratchet, which is the same air ratchets they use to take the nuts off the tires under car at the mechanic shop, they're about 90 decibels. So those are pretty loud as well. Here is the City Hall reading. So you can see on the map, we did a, I'm not sure if you can see the red line, but that corresponds to 100 feet and 200 feet distance from the building. City Hall, the main door of City Hall is about 350 feet. Now granted, when you look at this, you have a whole building in between City Hall and the actual range that's dampening that noise. So these levels are predicted to be less than this. Average noise in City Hall over by the flagpole is about 55 decibels, and over in the parking lot, the one-hour average came out to 51. Again, these are averages. You have people coming in, closing car doors, talking. You have a lot of sound happening through that time, and most sounds are, they're just an impulse for a quick second, and then it stops. So that's going to sway your average down to the lower side. Lafayette Indoor Range. I'm sure a lot of people here are familiar with Lafayette. They've been open for forever. I mean, there's all the noise ordinance in York County doesn't apply to them, and that's why they're still open, because they cannot, they cannot hold them accountable to a noise ordinance that wasn't even there. Fortunately, we won't have that problem because all of our shooting will be indoors. But in Lafayette, they do have an indoor range. It's a small pistol range. It is built with brick walls. There's no sound dampening on it. On the backside of the range, there is a wooden wall in between the range and the surrounding houses. So you can see here, there's houses within 100, 200, about 150 feet of the outdoor range. The outdoor range, let's see, it's right there. I'm sorry, that's the, the indoor range is this building right here. Sorry, this one. That's the air rifle range. So this brown building is the indoor range for Lafayette. You can't even hear by the houses. It's amazing. Now, when you're next to it, over by the wall, yeah, you can hear it, but you're there to go shooting anyway, so it shouldn't bother you if you're there to go shoot. The loudest we recorded at Lafayette, we shot a .44 Magnum. That's the highest caliber we can shoot. You can only shoot pistols in Lafayette, and that went up to 83 decibels. The problem with this is that this range and other ranges, they have doors going to the outside, so sound will travel through the door to go to the outside, which is one of the solutions we came out with, which is get rid of the door. You won't have any noise coming out of it. Freedom Outdoors. Freedom Outdoors, they actually used to be a furniture company there. That huge building was retrofitted with an indoor range. They built a steel box, and inside the steel box, they put the ranges in there. There is some sound dampening built into the range, specifically acoustic panels on the top, but all of this sound dampening is designed to make it easier for the shooter to discharge their firearms indoors. It makes it more comfortable so that there's no echo when you shoot. It does help a little bit with the sound going outside, but then again, on the backside of Freedom Outdoors, you have a door going out to the parking lot right there. The loudest we got there was 75.4 decibels, where the average was 61. When we went out there, they actually had the US Navy shooting M16 qualification courses inside, and you could barely hear it outside. A lot of this noise also comes from the highway. If you can see, the highway is right next to it. Marksmen, smaller range here in Hampton. Marksmen, it's pretty bare bones when it comes to shooting ranges. They have a shop, they have, the range is built with brick walls, plywood roof. That's true, they have a plywood roof. And on the backstop, they have a steel plate and a rubber mat that they hang in front of it, and they swap it out every now and then to keep it fresh. There is train tracks next to it, there's a church across the street, church is right here, and there's some businesses across the way from the store. In Marksmen, you can see here, a train actually went by while we were doing the sound study, and I thought, well, that's going to ruin my study, but it actually shows how loud it is. Here's the train horn, and as the train goes by, looking at about 75 decibels for just the train rolling by. If you look over, you'll see what a car door sounds like. A customer left, and he shut the door. And down here, you will see a .44 Magnum inside a wall, inside a room with just concrete blocks. It's about 67 decibels outside. You could hear the pop, but once you went across the parking lot, you couldn't hear it. We also shot 9mm because that's the most, one of the most common calibers people shoot. Again, Lafayette or Marksmen, there's no rifles allowed in Marksmen. Green Top. Green Top Range, they recently changed, they changed ownership to Green Top. It was owned by a different company before, and this is actually a purpose-built range. There's two ways you can build a range. You can purpose-build it, or you can just retrofit a building like Freedom did. Now, Green Top was built from the ground up as a shooting range, and they're actually rated up to 50 caliber. So is Freedom, by the way. They're also rated to 50 caliber. My range will be rated to 50 caliber. Nobody's shooting a 50 caliber in there. I don't want to shoot a 50 caliber there, and it's really loud. So it just, it ensures that the projectiles will stay inside where they're supposed to. That's what the rating is for. Green Top has a single brick wall exterior. They have an exterior door on the backside of the building, which is right here. A lot of noise comes out through that door, and they do have sound dampening panels inside the base, but pretty much the range ends at the wall, and that is one of the main concerns that we have with our building. At Green Top, you can see the average is 55 decibels. Again, this is over, I believe it was over 45 minutes. Maximum was 74, minimum was 47. Now, you can see that 74. It could have been a car door closing, or it could have been a gunshot. There's no way to know because they all sound the same. Islander Outdoors. So here's our project. It's going to be a purpose-built range, rated up to 50 calibers, and like it says in there, nobody's shooting a 50 BNG in there for obvious reason. One of the main solutions to our problem is to do a double wall, double brick wall on the shooting range. If you can give sound space to expand and, I guess, decrease the vibrations of the frequency, you will have less sound outside. So this is what we did. As you saw in the development plan, there is, or in the floor plans, part of our range is below grade. We understand, we live in Pecoson and half the year the city's underwater, but I assure you, this will not be a problem with the correct engineering. We've reached out to engineering, an engineer company here in Hampton Roads, and they said this is no problem at all to make it so that it does not flood. Part of the reason why the flat range is below grade is to help with dampening of the sound. There would be, that would probably be the loudest range in the building, but because it's on the ground and the way it's designed, you won't be able to hear that outside. It just, the sound just won't travel through. All the shooting bays, even the upstairs double bays, they all have sound dampening panels under, not only for the customers, but also to allow the sound to not go to the outside of the building. The way we designed this building is to have the shooting range furthest away from City Hall, so that way we ensure that you can't hear anything. Outside of that, you have the police station. Well, the police station is just about the same distance as City Hall is from our building because you have the parking lot there, so. And we also have fountains up Pecoson. They're about 350 feet away. Again, they're about the same distance as City Hall is. Thomas, do you have the, do you have the floor plans here?
Yeah, sure.
First floor, bottom floor. Let's talk about the 100-yard range. All it is, is pretty much a, you have three-foot covert pipes that are underground. That allows the projectile to go through the covert underground. You'll have actually a sidewalk over it because it's not rated for vehicular traffic, but you'll have the sidewalk going into the building through there. And then on the outs, on the end of it, you're going to have a bullet trap that will trap the projectile made out of rubber. You actually have an angled steel plate and rubber mulch, and then the trap will be cleaned out. It's not a range that is going to be used for a lot of shooting, mostly sighting in. It's just, there's not a lot of space here. It's got a specific purpose to it. The flat range, a lot of people are not familiar with flat ranges. They're mostly used by police departments in places where you do training. The purpose of the flat range is to allow not only our customers to take safety courses in an area where you don't have lanes and you can have instructors leading a course, is to allow law enforcement agencies to go in there and train to their own standards. Sometimes it's kind of hard to set up barriers when you have lanes in the way. So this will help not only law enforcement partners with our firearm safety courses in there. The quiet range, it's, I call that a quiet range because essentially you're not supposed to have any loud reports there. It's right next, it's boarding City Hall, so this is where our airgun range and archery range will be located. It's quiet because, well, those don't make much sound, but it'll allow customers to have a nice open area where they're comfortable, indoors, climate-controlled, the whole year where they can go in and practice archery and fundamentals of airgun shooting. Now, the 25-yard base, we talked about the storage, or Thomas talked about the storage. I decided to put the storage there because you have a lot of empty space there, and once you start putting boxes and other items in there, that it's only going to absorb the sound more, further decreasing how much sound will be going to the outside of the building. And this is all done on purpose with a lot of thought to it. You also notice that there's no exterior doors on this side of the building, okay? That is so that all the sound stays inside the building and does not go out through the door. Now, if you're in the retail area, yes, you will absolutely be able to hear the gunshots, but then again, you're there to go shooting anyways, so it should not bother you. And we talked about the Masonene levels just for offices, admin offices into the range. It's Florida, right?
Yep.
There you go. Commissioners, did you have a chance to go over the sound study and the letter that was brought over? Okay. Due to unforeseen circumstances, my acoustical expert was not able to make it tonight, but he will surely be at the City Council meeting next month or when that happens. But in this theoretical write-up, he explains how the design works. You have the double masonry walls. In our design, you have a lot more space than a two-inch air gap in between, so we can arrange a consult with the engineer. He said that within business hours, he can be reached out to, and any of you have any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to him, and he will explain in detail how the sound dampening works and how, he was able to come up with 55 decibels being a good number for our condition. So I will leave that there with the sound study. Wanted to point out, sorry. Right now, for those in the audience that are not familiar, Pecoson has a noise ordinance which dictates all activity in the city has to be less than 55 decibels at night, more or in less than 65 decibels during the day. Now, this is measured from other buildings in, from inside the building, four feet from the wall. In that same sound ordinance, you have a section for restaurants. Restaurants are allowed 75 decibels. First of all, they have to be, they have to maintain with a 55 to 65 all the time, but between midnight and 7:00 AM, they can go up to 75 decibels in any public area of that restaurant, outside of the restaurant. They can be during that time, 7, or midnight to 7:00 AM, they can go down to 55 decibels if it's measured inside the building, of an adjacent building. A restaurant is an approved use of this Village Commercial, so when you look at the approval for our noise condition, take that into consideration that other uses in this district are allowed louder conditions based on noise than we are in this application. So far, does the commission have any questions? Okay. I want to thank you again for your time, and we're looking forward to getting this built and operating here in Pecosin.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Who would like to speak regarding this application? Raise your hand. If you could come up and state your name and your address, we'd love to hear your comments.
Yes, excuse me. Steven Bolte, 23 Canal Drive here in Pecosin. Love the idea of having a shooter range in the area with all the ex-military in Pecosin and all the other people. I think it would be a very popular business to have in Pecosin and would be a great thing. So I'll keep it short, but thank you for considering.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Heathfield. I live at 242 Cedar Road. I just want to say that I support this, this use permit, and I'd like to see a shooting range in Pecosin. It sounds like the owner has done a lot of due diligence to make it safe, make it a low-noise event, and I'd like to see it go through.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Mr. Commissioner Sulu Stapp. I'm the expenditure.
I live at 2 Ashland Farm Lane here in the city. I wrote some notes in the hopes that it would keep me on track and not go on a tangent about the history of Pecosin because I'd love to do that when I get the opportunity. The way I see it is there are two major considerations tonight before you. The first is ensuring the future extension of what I grew up knowing as Willie Ann Road, was named after an old black couple that had a house on that, but now it's, I see, called Willie Anna. And the second issue is determining whether the applicant's proposed use is appropriate or if it can be made appropriate through the imposition of conditions. So I think those are the two major issues. And in my opinion, the preservation of the area required for the extension of Willie Ann Road is paramount and is more important issue. Probably many residents of Pecosin do not remember prior to Victory Boulevard, when the only two ways in and out of Pecosin were Yorktown Road and Carriage Chapel Road, if you wanted to go to York County. Well, Willie Ann Road is of ancient origin, and it predates either Yorktown Road or Carriage Chapel Road. It used to be the only way out of Pecosin if you wanted to go to York County. People find that hard to believe, just as members of the Board of Supervisors in York County find it hard to believe that Pecosin had the largest population of the county, and that's why the only high school in the county was built in Pecosin. But it's a fact. There was no new bridge across With Creek to go to Hampton. To get to Hampton, you had to either get on a boat and cross Back River, or go up to Big Bethel Road and make the long journey overland. My grandmother used to tell me many a time, when she was a girl, young woman, she had her own rowboat, and she'd catch the ebb tide, row down to Willoughby Point, and then turn and go up the southwest prong of Back River, put her boat at the foot of the King Street Bridge, walk to downtown Hampton, do her shopping, and come back, catch the flood tide, and come back home to Cedar Road. So our times have changed. But, and the oldest story I can remember about Willie Ann Road, Mr. Tilford Crandall told me, and probably y'all don't remember Mr. Tilford Crandall, Albert Sidney might, Mr. Tip. His family grew up and resided for years on Big Bethel Road until Mr. Lorraine captured his heart and brought him down here. But he told me, and I cannot for the life of me remember the name he told me, one of his ancestors said that he was coming to Pecosin one day, and he ran into some schoolchildren going out of Pecosin on Willie Ann Road, and he told them, "Children, turn around, go back home." And I think he said they were going to school, but I'm not sure of that. "There's not going to be any school today. The Yankees have marched out of Hampton. There's going to be a battle." And that was a battle of Big Bethel, First Land Battle, June 10th, I think, 1861. So Willie Anna Road was way out of Pecosin that long ago. Eighty years later after that, in 1941, Gerard Chambers made a platter survey during the settlement of the estate of Martha Smith Hunt, and he noted the existence of Willie Anna Road on that, and you all have seen that as part of your items that were presented to you. So it was clearly established and recognized, you know, in 1941, that this road was in existence and had been in existence. Now, we've gone, I guess, another 80 years, and we have the decision tonight, what we're going to do regarding Willie Ann Road. And as pointed out, the comprehensive plan always contemplated that Willie Ann Road would be extended and would extend to City Hall and perhaps even beyond to preserve the access into the big woods. Well, when Langley Federal Credit Union and the Food Lion Shopping Center were developed, I had the honor of being the city attorney at that time, and even though a great deal of time has passed, I remember the robust negotiations that went on with those two property owners in order that we could preserve Willie Ann Road. And as you can see on the plat, it's preserved all the way up to its present terminus at the end of the Food Lion property. And in the end, both the credit union and the Food Lion developers recognized that designing their developments to incorporate Willie Ann Road as a future public right-of-way would be in the public interest and would be in their own private interest because it would benefit the property having that road frontage. And they recognized the public benefit of being recognized as a good corporate entity, a good corporate citizen. If you determine that the conditional use permit application is appropriate, I urge you to ensure that a condition is imposed mandating that the necessary area along the northern boundary of the property be dedicated in order to ensure that an extension of Willie Ann Road can be accomplished at some time to connect with City Hall Avenue and beyond, if necessary. I sincerely believe to fail to do that would be detrimental to the public interest. And although I recognize, surely, and am a strong property rights advocate, a property owner and real estate owner should be able to develop his property, but that right does not supersede the public's interest to manage and preserve public thoroughfares into property and to facilitate public interest. And this is particularly true where a private individual does not have the right of right to develop his property, but must become before the governing body to ask to do a use that is not permitted by right and is only deemed acceptable if certain conditions And as has been told to you and repeated several times, what the applicant proposes is a large footprint. I mean, he's proposing to cram a lot on that piece of property. But I'm also advised, and I had a very pleasant meeting with Joe, and I mean no disrespect by calling him Joe because I'll probably mangle his last name with my Bull Island brogue, so if I try to pronounce that, and he can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong. He can slide his development without any change to the south and still give that area necessary to preserve Willie Ann Road. So I certainly urge you to make that a condition. And with regard to the second matter, whether or not the use is proper for the Village Commercial District or can be made so by the imposition of conditions, that's a matter upon which reasonable minds can disagree. Some in this room, I'm sure, would say, "There's no way. It shouldn't be there. It's a terrible use." And certainly, I can, I can understand that. The possible adverse effects that would be thrown off to adjoining properties by that use are certainly a matter for, and a cause for concern. But I would say the noise issue, while important, is an engineering problem. I think engineers, if given enough time and money, can pretty much fix anything, if you want to put the money and energy into it. So I see that as an engineering problem. My concern is less with the decibel levels that might be generated than with the psychological effect of the use and the proximity of it to a large residential area, City Hall, the public library, the psychological or perhaps unbased fear of the clientele that might use it and attend it, the hours of operation, the enforcement of such conditions as may be imposed. And in my experience, perception becomes reality, whether it's based in fact or not. So I think the psychological effect of people thinking about this use and whatever they conceive of as a shooting range will be more perhaps adverse or detrimental than any perceived or possible noise that might escape the building. But thank you all for your dedication and support. I leave these issues to you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to speak? State your name and your address, please.
My name's Jeff Beeland. I live at 2 Gordon Drive, Pecosin, Virginia. I recently moved here from California, so I know a lot about regulations. I don't know a lot about the history of Pecosin here. I think we covered that. The, when I looked at this, and I've traveled this country over my past 40 years and shot probably 30, 40 gun ranges across the country, if not more, this is one of the nicest things I've ever seen. I mean, this blew me away when I saw the rendering. As far as the, the big issue seems to be the noise issue. I don't know if any of you guys have been down to the Freedom Gun Range that Jose talked about earlier. I challenge any of you to stand outside and tell me if you can hear anything out there. It's literally, can't hear anything. I can hear more traffic on the street than I can hear, you know, gun noises coming out of it. I was in California, LAX Gun Range in West Chester over by Inglewood, was set up pretty much the same way he's setting it up, with the rubber pellets at the back, literally no, no, no sound coming out of there at all either. So the one big thing I love about this is, you know, nowadays, so many people, and I would dare say, living here in Pecosin now, 85% of the people here, if not more, probably own guns. I think that would be a fair statement. In California, a little bit of a challenge, obviously. The thing I see, and why I think this would be beneficial are for safety reasons, more and more people are carrying concealed weapons, not to be sexist, but a lot more women, thank God, are carrying weapons. I think by what Jose is offering here as far as training is huge for the area, it's huge for us as a society. I see no detriment to this as far as perception. I mean, to me, I'm more offended by a bar than I am a shooting range, and you've got two bars here, one in your main street. I just, looking at it and all that Jose's offering here, I think would be huge for Pecosin, great revenue generator. It's a great plan he's put together, and I'm 100% for it. So I thank you guys for your time.
And I live in North Virginia, which is in Matthews County. I would like to offer my support for this project because as someone who has concealed carry, had to go to concealed carry classes in Virginia in Freedom, which is off of Virginia Beach Boulevard, in which duck, it would be much nicer to have something on this end. In North, like in Matthews, people shoot outside. We do need something inside. There are women classes that could be performed there. Another, also, thank you, sir, for expressing your concerns about the use here in such proximity to residential area. Given that you cannot hear anything outside, I don't see how that would be an issue. My guess is a lot of people with the buffers and the green canopy that I saw there, the people didn't even know it's there unless it's advertised. There is no outdoor proposed noise-making or anything, so I don't see why that would be an issue. And again, when we talked about certain property belonging to someone, an owner of a property, in the 1800s, even nowadays, if you trespass on somebody's property, you may get shot, you know, without warning, in a different state. So I just would like to point out that Mr. Raffles should have the right to do with his building location within his property, provided that he takes care of the setbacks and on his, the buffers and all the things that he had thoughtfully considered. I don't see why we should not have this on this end of the water, and we're not going to go to Freedom or even in Lynn Haven, on Lynn Haven around the Virginia Beach.
Good evening. My name's Moody Harp, and I apologize for it being logged in wrong before, but I live at 711 Dogwood Road. Again, as I expressed, I think this is a very good use for the property and for the city of Pecosin. Not only will it be an avenue for young children to learn the proper handling of firearms, as well as women, I think it's also a good opportunity for a family environment, for people coming from Newport News, coming from Hampton, learning the safety of firearms and spending money in Pecosin, visiting your restaurants. Some may even live in some of the new housing that's close by. I do think it's an opportunity. It could be a family environment, no different than Topgolf. If you've ever been there, Virginia Beach, it's very lucrative. This could be the same atmosphere. It's not an outdoor range. You know, it's 12 degrees this morning. Even this evening, it's cold. It'd be a place that you could go with your family, shoot, and learn gun safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before Mr. Raffles comes back up to make his closing remarks?
Up to the podium, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know we got two new members, so you probably don't get minutes to what I said last time, but I'll try to repeat what I said, and that is, we're advertising...
Could you state your name and your address, please?
Albert White. My family owns property contiguous to this proposal. We've, my deed goes back to 1925. Our deed goes back to 1925. Our deed goes back to 1925. It doesn't say anything about Willyanna Road on it, and we've had it surveyed twice. So we think we own a piece of property. And again, Pecosa is trying to grow itself. The advertisements are, "Pecosa is the place." And it's great for people to come wherever they live to Pecosa. We have good schools. We have good property. But I don't see a shooting range as something valuable to where we want to be. We want to have nice schools, nice homes, more shopping centers, maybe. And there's suitable places other than right around here where you have a lot, the density of Pecosa has shifted to this area. If we look at all the homes and all the apartments that had been recently built around here, it's a center of the city. And there's opportunity for this place to grow. It may be slow to grow, but there are other places more suitable for a range, shooting range. It's taken a lot of property to build this. And secondly, if we look at some of the developments we have, you know, they're good for five years and then they slow down, and some people convert that property. How are you going to convert a shooting range if it's unsuccessful with all this structure underground and above ground? But again, you're going to vote, the city supervisors are going to vote, and I hope they think about what's really good for the city. I'm not going to be here that much longer, but I would like to leave it with the footprint that others can grow on it from it. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Raffles, you have the floor.
So I want to address the issue with Wilnana Road. In its current state, we have a forty-foot setback on the north side for Wilnana Road. It's very, very beneficial to us to have that connection, just as it is beneficial to Mr. White, Mr. Han, who is an adjacent property owner, and Ms. Champagne, which is an adjacent property owner, and Legacy up at Pecosa. You see, the issue here is that all these properties are landlocked, and without this connection, you are limited to White Creek Road and Victory. And Legacy only has really two entrances to Victory. That's where you're going to get all those people out. There is a way to build Wilnana Road. I don't think it should be part of this application because the application here we're talking about is for the use of the shooting range. How we're going to build Wilnana Road has to go into later conversations to do it in a more reasonable way. As the owner of this lot, why do I have to be the only person that's giving up my land to build this road? Do you think that's fair? I don't know. But again, that's something for a different day, different conversation, and I think we can address this issue in a more efficient manner than making it part of the CUP, which is why I asked for this condition to be removed for the CUP. If you notice, I kept the building with the forty-foot setback, and that alone should tell you my commitment to this. However, I don't think it's appropriate to have it as part of the CUP. The footprint. So you can see the public safety building. They pretty much have about the same footprint we have in relationship to their lot size. So if they can do it, I don't see why that's a big issue. We actually plan to have really nice landscaping and a nice facade to the building, so it actually looks really good. The use of the lot, the psychological aspects, the clientele. Did you all know there are CBD businesses here in Pecosa? As an airline pilot, I can't use CBD products. Will you feel comfortable with your pilot being on CBDs? Absolutely not. Do I feel insulted? No. Nobody does. It's not your business. If somebody wants to do that, that's them. Same thing with shooting and recreational. There's worse things in Pecosa than a shooting range. Psychological aspect, I understand where they're coming from, but if you could find me a shooting range in the Hampton Roads area that doesn't have houses within two hundred feet, I'll give you ten dollars because there isn't. You go down to Virginia Beach, you got shooting ranges. Let's talk about Freedom. They have houses within fifty feet of the range. I guarantee you, they sleep pretty good at night over there. There's no issues with psychological aspects there. I've met a lot of the people that bought properties at Legacy. They're all great. A lot of military members out there moving in. They want their families living in pretty much the best place in Hampton Roads, which is Pecosa. That's why me and my wife moved here. And they're all stoked about having this venue next to where they live. I mean, heck, they can walk there. That's pretty good. So I don't foresee any psychological detrimental, psychological aspects of the shooting range. And, you know, the clientele, I want to debunk that because I'd probably tell you that half the people in Pecosa are carrying around a gun every day while they walk around town. This town is a very unique town. Nothing really happens over here, and it's for a reason. It's because we live in a safe community, and the people that come here know that. And, well, I'll leave that at that. As far as other places, when we started working on this project, must have been about five years ago, we looked at other places in Pecosa. Unfortunately, this is the last decent-sized lot in the city that was available. And I took all my savings and we purchased it because we believed in it. If you can find a better lot than this in this city, I'm all ears. But the reality is that there isn't, and all of the surrounding lots, south of my lot, north of White Creek, all of those will be developed into houses. It's just the reality of it. It's great for the city. There's a lot of tax revenue coming from housing, but people need a place to go to do things, to recreate, to blow off some steam. And this is exactly what we're offering. It's a place for the residents of Pecosa and visitors to come here and spend their time in our beloved town. Again, board members, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to explain some of these concepts we have here. If you have any further questions, I'll be available. And thank you for all the members of the community that came out in support, and those were concerns as well. You all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Raffles. No one else wishes to speak concerning the application, correct? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask the pleasure of the planning commission as to what they would like to discuss regarding this. We did briefly discuss this in our work session. And in fairness of the public that is here this evening, I would like to share what I shared with you tonight regarding the Willyanna Road access and what we heard clarified from Thomas this evening. So if you don't mind, since we discussed it earlier, is permissible for me to go back and share that again with the viewing audience, if y'all are okay with that? First and foremost, as a planning commission, we are to uphold what is stated in the comprehensive plan. Certainly in the comprehensive plan, it is stated under Chapter Seven, under Infrastructure, under Section One, it does identify the parcel, construction, new access streets to provide alternative routes in the event of a road blockage or emergency evacuation will significantly improve public safety and first responder access in the city. And this specific parcel that's highlighted in green here, the extension of Alpha Street to City Hall Avenue should be considered to improve connectivity and promote economic development within the Village Commercial District. And that is the district we are discussing tonight. Why this is important to include in the CUP tonight is it's just that, it is the CUP. When the site plans and things of that nature come forward for the staff, they need to understand this forty-foot access is there for placement of that building. It also provides emergency access across that for, you know, ladder trucks, anything going back, you know, God forbid, to the legacy of Pecosa. It provides that access. And if City Council so chooses to fund a roadway in this area, no cost to Mr. Raffles, and they so desire and approve that, that's not for us to approve for appropriate funding, then to me, as planning commission, and one of the things that we should take into consideration is the application as well as the city as a whole, our community and our comprehensive plan, in which Mr. Hershey served on as a citizen representative to that, and several other people have as well. And so I put that forward to Planning Commission tonight. Thomas and I had discussed this previously. We discussed it in work session. I have provided you with an amendment to the CUP under Item Number Three with, if I have your consensus, if you all agree to this, would replace that. And we could consider that, and I'd be happy to read that for the public, for the viewing audience as well. And it would basically state, it would replace Item Number Three, and it says, "The applicant owner shall convey a forty-foot portion of property for the purpose of future city right-of-way along the northern property line of the subject property to provide connection from City Hall Avenue and a future extension of Alpha Street. The forty-foot section to be conveyed will be achieved consistent with the depiction provided by the applicant. And as referenced in the application and presentation materials, the conveyance of the property shall only occur following City Council's approval of a roadway extension to provide the applicant access and prior to the approval of a site development plan. If City Council does not approve that, this does not pertain any longer." So with that, I would love to hear your thoughts on this for discussion tonight as we consider this application further.
I think that this is actually the right discussing this as we're kind of moving, certainly gaining better access to the apartments as well as, you know, Legacy as well as the shooting range.
I can see both sides of this. I see the owner's point of view that he owns a property and wants to develop something on the property. If he was developing something that was permitted by right, I believe he could develop whatever he wanted consistent with the current zoning and block that in, and we wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion. So I certainly see that point of view. I also do feel like it's our responsibility to try to follow the guidance set forth in the comprehensive plan, which does specifically-